Now call it over, the New Carlisle City Council meeting Thursday, August 9th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Bridge, you have to call the roll for us.
Oh.
Brad Hemsworth's not here.
You're right. Was there any specific order I need to go in?
Just call him.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, here.
Mr. Lindsey?
Here.
Mayor Reynolds?
President.
Mr. Lowry?
Here.
And Mr. Shanty?
Here.
Can I, Mr. Lindsey, please forgive me?
Vice Mayor. We have six members present, so we're going to our invocation tonight by Vice Mayor Bill O'Keefe.
Heavenly Father, we come to you once again, Father, in Jesus' name. We ask you to give us the wisdom and the guidance we need to move this city forward and to take care of the city's business. In Jesus' name we pray.
Good morning, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no minutes tonight, and we have no communication. Mr. Hale from the Clark County Community Development.
Right here.
Evening.
Mr. Hale, thank you so much for coming down here today. We appreciate it. We know you're a very, very busy man. Evening meetings are sometimes long. This one will not be as long, but we do really appreciate your time. We did ask Mr. Hale to come visit us today. Me, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Cobb did have a meeting up at his office about two weeks ago to discuss something with Madison School and some vacant properties. In that meeting, there was a discussion about land bank and then also what the city can do with these vacant structures. So now is a perfect opportunity for any council member to kind of pick Mr. Hale's brain. Mr. Hale, if you have anything you want to add to this, maybe give them a little brief overview of the land bank and what it does, if at all possible.
Sure. Our land bank in the county was established in May of 2014, and the good reason it was established was because at that time, there were part of the funds coming out of Washington and then came to the state of Ohio, and they were coming specifically to land back. There was an initial $60 million designation, and they had 250 million, 10 million distribution. That's when we incorporated. The first round of money was to the Clark County, it was $680,000. The money was specifically slated for tax foreclosed vacant land property in targeted areas. The state determined through a study what this target area would be. As the program evolved, the county was awarded several more amounts, and today that amount is just under $2,200,000. They're not only the houses were done originally in the city of Springfield because their numbers are the ones that prevail. They had the most vacant land with tax foreclosed properties that were in bad shape that were falling down or issues such as illegal activity. So since 2014, that's what has been done. Since that time, the target area has been expanded for us maybe four times, and what we do is we identify a target area, the state says there has to be five, at least five houses that qualify to use this program fund. And as, forgive me, this is August, I think in February and March, the council and Samaritan Drive will finally put the rig over to the state to prove it is a target area. Matter of fact, we have a house that I think was bought on Ross. So state has its stipulations, what happens after we tear down, what we're going to do to the property, how we handle it. We have the property. When we get ready to dispose of it, it would have to be in joint neighbor, it has to be nonprofit. They have several, several other criteria that people can receive that empty lot. Sometimes those lots are available, sometimes they're not. It depends on each individual area zone. We don't get into that part of it. Certainly not redeveloped aside yet. So that's been the primary focus of the land bank and state as far as the rest of state land banks go. That money is starting to dry up, coming from the feds down to the state. There's other monies that are looking for commercial vacant structures and factories or anything that's sitting around that's non-residential. So that's currently being worked on. The land bank is a quite a governmental nonprofit, so it operates independently. The land bank is contracted to my department, so I act on it as the Director of Community Economic Development of the county, but I'm also the Director of the Land Bank by contract. The books are separate from the county. The books are down right out of our office. We're authorized by the state just like the county is, and we both, and we write down the checks. And we have our own meeting, we have a board, five-member board. Your county treasurer and every county treasurer in the state is the chairman first, that's by the legislation. Then there's the vice chairman, and then two county commissioners have to be on that board, at least two, so we could have the fall sunshine law. And one, we're coming from your largest county seat, so we have a representative from the city of Springfield, and then you have to have a representative from your largest township. We have four townships, and we have an individual. We went to all four townships, they selected somebody, and it's a retired chairman. So that's why five-person board is regular, that's what we do. We don't meet every month, especially the busiest we've been, and then I don't know how closely the Washington paper was going, but the county decided to use the land bank as their tool, and the land bank's a problem owner of the mall. That's why I have a global factor. And the reason we own the mall, because we were able to provide a tax incentive to the seller that made it inviting enough, because he was not doing anything with the mall. He was letting the mall die, it was quickly, the demise was real. For 11 months, I've been working with purchasers. Tonight I have a report, he was about 30 days away from saying, I think it'll be redeveloped or we may should use. Retail will still be there, restaurants will still be there. I cannot reveal what they're going to do because that's terrorism. And, you know, it eventually will come out, we hope. If it don't, I'll probably sweep the streets out there. So that's a big project, the land bank. County commissioner just today transferred the armory and fairgrounds to the land bank. That's because the land bank, by legislation, has easier authority than local government to manage and dispose the property. That's what the land bank handles property. So today we have one armory and a fairgrounds, and I would say it will be demolished and that property will be redeveloped with some of that attention to people that will be conducive to what goes on on a fair, whether it be a restaurant, you know, if you're revisiting a restaurant, it's a hotel, or a restaurant that's going to be empty and trampled. It'll be whatever we can extract. So that's what the land bank does. Plots, grants, which we're running, those kind of things. This October will be the first ever incorporation and assembly of the State Land Bank Association. We meet with them quarterly, we'll be there, land bank and state quarterly, they're now 53. Now that they're down, Miami is not, Green is not, Champaign is not, Madison is not, so surrounding us, we consider them all the smallest. We let packing states about two years ago, three years ago, we let the state land banks follow them, and applying to the IRS for a private load will make us a charitable contribution on the 511s and 300s here and now. We're not through that tax bill, so we do not have an 90. So we led that charge, and it took about 14 or 15 months, and the IRS issued us a private load, we are a charitable contribution. So we've had people donate land to us, we've had people donate houses to us, and they can rack that off. And that part is their business, we just have the right to do it for offer. So we've been a very active land bank. The staff, the community development staff, the land bank, there are no employees currently other than the ones who live in the mall. As soon as we track through that, that's what we do. Any questions about that?
Counsel? No. Great information.
108 houses have been demolished here at the land bank. 70 have been returned to a positive tax park. That is 108 houses that have paid any property tax at all, and 70 have been returned to positive status. Now, there's no structure there anymore. Not for the tax incentive, but at least it's not one. So wherever, whatever community it may be, and they no longer have to deal with all the hassle, this is a down. We're removing all that.
Mr. Lowry?
What are the circumstances, possibilities for Madison School?
Madison School, mine department also handles the cycle of the land bank. Mine department also runs off with CDVG. So you know what CDVG's done for, we've allowed for the last eight years. Okay. We continue to focus on that as well. And matter of fact, we just applied, we'll find out in the next week or two, we just applied for brick under structure for the city again. Last year it paid French drive, so this year we're hoping to do something else with it. We're closely with Randy and Howie to figure out what those projects are. CDVG can also tear down a school. The land bank can get involved in schools as well. You can do it in conjunction with CDVG. We would make that recommendation too, if we close the deal.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hale, you say it can be in conjunction?
It can be.
Which is?
It can be, but not at this application. It would be our next application. CDVG, they change the cycle every two years now, instead of every year. So we're running on two-year cycle.
Because at one point in time, we had almost taken the money to take down Madison School with you guys, and then we said no, and we took it for something else.
I only know Mr. Bridge, though.
Yeah, so we missed that opportunity.
But certainly, certainly, our department has made sure that we go out and see if we can develop the CDVG funds. And again, I work for the land bank, this required property on Ross Avenue to take down.
No, that didn't go through?
No, it wasn't the city. You know, Ethan was working on that today, and he ran that by me, and then wanted to take the dis, okay, we're good.
Okay.
I know he said Ross Avenue.
Okay.
I don't know if that means water or something.
Got you.
It's somewhere.
Good. It's probably 315.
So that's what we're doing. We do, in the next, I expect in the next week or two, we'll find out about brick under structure, which is, it's a decent amount, it really is, for as small. The little dollars that the county gets, the city's really getting the majority of it. Matter of fact, we're allowed up to four CDVG projects in the cycle, and this year we're only doing two. So you guys are getting a lot of share.
I know, I think you take those proposals to do, that you're that grant to do the other half of the deal.
I believe that's it.
And it's only a matter of time before we run out of areas that we can actually apply CDVG into our load of water income, because we don't have. I mean, once we get Northwoods done, I think maybe a little bit of forward, it's classified, it's low income, and that's some of the rules with block rate has to be used in low-income areas, right?
Census for Alamo, it's getting tougher, you know, naturally because the federal government's changing rules, the state's changing their rules, because our, you know, it's a state, not in favor of the community, so that's how it operates, but it's getting more strict for less funds, and that would be the best we can. But again, the land bank is working in conjunction with CDVG and helping Madison School, I've highlighted, and I think for the next application, that might be high enough to consider if the city so desires.
So if we were to take the CDVG money, which we have to pass today, and then we just transfer the property over, the property itself, the vacant lot, so we can see if we can tear down the school, I would assume.
As possible.
And then we transfer the lot to the land bank.
We would do a proposition that would create a redevelopment apartment where we'll do a very product, we can get rid of the product, which is made so that this is a cycle.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Is that next cycle 2020?
Yes, the application.
Do it in 2019.
And the CDVG money that comes this year, could be applied this year or applied in 2020?
The CDVG money from this year will be part specifically for street.
For street.
Yeah, that's our application, that's how that will modify that.
Fantastic.
It's strictly for street.
2020.
So we would apply for that in 2019?
Yeah, we'll apply for that soon. You apply in spring, you're ordered in fall, your projects start to fall now for you.
Is that April, April's the deadline for that? Something like that?
Counsel, questions, Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Hale, is it possible that Madison Street School could be turned over to you people?
Well, yes, we're thinking possible. Do you mean in its current state?
Yeah.
Sure, we can, if I would so choose to take it like that, but also that I'm very contented. I don't know about that. Historically, we would want to have, be in position financially or have it in use for it. Since we don't have that yet, we'd have to create a plan. So if you said you wanted us to look into that, then we would certainly take it to heart instead of making it. Because the ideal, best scenario is that we allow the sons of the government to help us with the option, so that it doesn't cost any other than us affecting the factor other than what it is.
I mean, I'm just looking, this has been a nice story for several years.
I did through it, it's not familiar.
And I'm trying to find every option there is to get out from underneath of it.
Well, I appreciate you thinking of me, but not yet.
Thank you, but no, thank you.
You're no fun.
Thank you, but no, thank you.
I'm actually, I'm actually.
What I don't mean right now, but I mean, is it feasible, possible to look into on down the road?
Yes, I guess, and I'll get inside, but I think as a group, we want to sit down and say, what's the end goal, what do we want to see, what does the city want to see there, and figure out how to get there. And we have our dollars, our program dollars that are feeding the land bank right now, and this is a demolition phase, is over, we have to be done at the end of 2019. We have to extend all our funds, about $2,200,000, we're down, we have, after our next draw, we're going to be down about $300,000, so we're almost out of money, and we anticipate we're going to have money by June 19. So we'll be done far before the end. At that point, we need to be evaluating, what are we going to do next? Because one thing, the land bank has a tremendous way by legislation to acquire property. And we've tore down a lot of things, now we're going to do something back. You know, we need to create some of our infrastructure, we take it all down, then, you know, the tax base has changed dramatically, that's not our goal. That's why we bought the mall, we didn't buy the mall to be mall, we bought it because the person that was there was going to let it go to the point where it was going to be empty or tore down. If it is, the value of that property to the whole county was going to be bad, so we bought it to try to keep life.
Counsel? Mr. Cook, did you have something?
Yes. In regards to our meeting with Mr. Hale, I think we get our eyes opened in quite a few areas. I guess what I'm looking at is the fact that if we were to possibly scout out a developer for this after it was down, would that assist you in your plans for this?
No question. As I stated earlier, when there's an end user, you'd be struggling to match. But to have no end user and no plan, it's hard on all of us, because we're not sure what direction to take, and then you have to find a new partner. But I think what we've found, I'll use the mall as an example, nothing is impossible. There's nothing we're not willing to try.
So we found a developer, let's say, this year and next year, we can turn it over. Then to the land bank, and then that CDVG money would come available in 2020, and then it would be torn down.
Certainly, if you had a developer's interest, we want to sit down as a group and devise a plan and find out what's best for you. Because that's what we want. Ultimately, that's what we want. We're not, we're not a developer, we're a broker as a tool. It is a tool in the bag that has legislation that allows us to do a lot of things.
So primarily, in the event that we were to push a developer your way, I don't know whether that would help our cause a little bit more than the average duck, but I guess it would, in my estimation, work the plan a little bit closer to completion.
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel, Mr. Lowry?
Would be of interest to reach out to Mr. Dylan, who follows lots of twin groups?
I mean, I can, we already briefly talked a month ago, he said he already got enough to worry about it. Tom, we did the conversation with him, but he's got twin groups to deal with and all that stuff, so.
Counsel, anything else? Mr. Rip, do you have anything? Mr. Rip. Mr. Rip, I think it's a comment, so much as informative session, I think that opened up a lot of our eyes for nice ears.
Good. All any time, those guys, Adrian and so, very well at my office, and I believe they have my card. People know Ava, I'm going to get my card out.
Is that why you want your card by now?
I don't know. I didn't bring it to knock.
I wonder why they never got a card for me?
I don't like it.
You know, we're, you know, going, you don't think it's understood that because my office is on the other side of town, we don't know what's going on here because we do, I'm out here a lot, my people are out here a lot, and we have the same interest here that we have anywhere else, and we work for you, so I get to do some time with that.
How many properties has the land bank acquired in New Carlisle?
I think I'm going to embarrass and tell you a lot about this.
We submitted, I submitted a list of four or five that were taxed within, Rossburg was on that list. I know Ethan's doing a fantastic job of trying to get some of these taken care of. Sounds like he's making some leeway on the Rossburg property.
Yeah, the system underneath me handles most of that. I'm kind of fired now. I put out a fire, and people were mad, and I said, it's going to happen.
Excuse me.
So I think one of the ones that I like to brag about the most happened in Park Lane a couple of years ago. A property had been sitting in there for five years. A lady had needed a nurse, she did. She walked out of her house, and now all of the law is that this shit has been there. Deeded the house to three children. After a couple of years, two of the children deeded it to the third. In the meantime, Medicaid has put a bill, this is normal stuff, the bill got $169,000. So the owner of the home decides, mother passes, she wants to sell. It's got $5,000 in back taxes. Medicaid attorney tells her, can sell it, opened up the front door, there's been no utilities for five years. I just use your imagination, what everything looked like. There's been no heat, no air, nothing, no light, there's been no moving, house for five years. I called the Medicaid attorney and said, I'm curious. I said, we have a land bank, and I said, would you release the entirety to the land bank? He said, sure, I will. He did. We bought the house from the lady for $5,000. Guess what that did? It paid the taxes. So everybody in the tax park got dismissed. Taxes got paid. We happen to have $60,000 worth of government land that had been laying around for five years, and that one, everybody in the house. We gave it to a nonprofit who fixed the house up, gutted it, sold it for $82,000, and has a gentleman living in it today so proud, you can stand it. You wouldn't have been able to do that without the land bank, because the government was a number of these seventy, because they didn't want the profit off of it, they weren't getting their money. So the Medicaid attorney erased $169,000 of us out of the house, and so we don't tear everything down. And the young man bought it, he loved it. So that's, you know, that's happened for it.
Counsel, Mr. Hale? Mr. Rip?
Tom, I'm going to ask you another question here, and this may be a curveball. Mr. Bridge and I had a conversation. As you well know, when we do the grass abatement, this goes under tax duplicates, and you know what happens when the auditor decides to sell that, we aren't going to get a dime. Has there ever been any thought that due to the fact that this grass cutting and whatever abatements we have to do are technically a debt by the person that owns that property? Has there ever been a situation where somebody goes to court and tries to collect that debt?
Not yet. But I will tell you, all assessments by legislation are eliminated when we buy a property, not to mention the fact that by legislation, state law, we do not pay property tax. Anything we own, property tax is erased. The upper valve in the wall has some property tax on it. That is used as an incentive for purchasers to say, you haven't taxed from now to the end of the year. However, starting in January, you will get assessed. But we use it as incentive, and the idea for a land bank is not to hold a piece of property because it hurts, it doesn't help, so I hope you have it for you. There's the negative side of this. Now, assessments are tough, but the idea of the land bank is, is you take the community, the leaders, and what you're doing is working for them. You might lose the assessment, but they could possibly deed the property back to you when you sell it. And then you try to recoup some of their funds. And the land bank transfers property to the municipality without any issue. So there's only two things. It requires a lot of communication and a lot, and a lot of management, but all assessments will be.
We have to think of the assessments, is if those assessments get quite high, we're never going to see that anyhow, because that property is going to be defunct, and no one's going to buy it, and it's going to get torn down, so I think it's the best way to do it, and we've seen that already. Kind of some clarification? Yes.
What we were talking about is, yeah, of course, we're talking about the houses that are vacant. Let's say there's an occupied house, all right, and we go and we cut their grass, all right, we, you know, we do the bill, it's like $385 bucks. We send that to every August to the county to put on the property tax. Have you ever known of a case that where instead of it goes on the property tax, it maybe goes on the utility bill?
Yes.
So that is feasible? That is possible?
Well, you're getting into, I'm not a turner.
Yeah, and that's why I told him I didn't know how far you could go into.
I'm not a turner. You actually, you're supposed to tell you that means incredible, and/or have a conversation with Tina at all.
Okay, well, that's, she's well-able, that's right.
She's really the one you want to talk to about that.
Tina Callen?
Yes, but any assessment that goes with that property, I'll caution you on this. First thing is, is your county treasurer is very good at this. If a property has a back tax problem, he has the right to have all send it straight to the land bank. He does. Your county treasurer does not do that. He sends it first to sheriff's sale for the opportunity for the funds to come back. He then sends it to the second sheriff's sale. He still doesn't give it to the land bank. It has to go through two sheriff's sale, and nobody's interested, or the dollars don't work, and nobody buys it, before the land bank has the right to it, in our community. Now, in other land bank communities, some of their treasurers, in order to eliminate issues, they'll send it straight to the land bank. Our particular treasurer, who's the chairman of our board, does not. He and I have had a long conversation about this. And you have to understand, since 14, he and I, we've learned together, because the land banks just were born in Ohio, Ohio. Tri-Ohio County, Cleveland was the first. So it's been learning curve for everybody. So be careful not to do that to the entities that deserve those assessments or taxes until it's been through due process.
I guess where I'm coming from, I'm trying to circumvent some of the losses that we're undertaking by doing the grass cutting, mowing, throwing it on the tax assessment. I know we had one party here that we just passed this past week, who had, and I would say it's about $2,000 in assessments applied.
I'll get here, if the problem is, is that mortgage foreclosed, tax foreclosed, or the floors are blockified, and they're occupied, and then that, I think that you need, I think you need different legal devices to advise you how, and that's the way to handle that, and not let it get that high. But the other thing is, if it goes the land bank route, then work with us, tell us what we want and how you want to do it, and I'm confident something's going to be worked out, because that's what we need to do. It doesn't do anyone's any good if we can't redevelop these properties in something positive, even if it's, if it has to be tore down in somebody's yard. We want somebody that owns that property to take care of it. That's the idea. If you think about that, the city of Springfield right now has 108 properties that are not loaned. They refuse to give me a dollar. I've asked them. How much does that save? It's a big number. Staff time, letters, stamps, assessments, mowing, paying the mowing contractor, that's a big number. How many times have they moved? They've signed it for a year. They've done it over a year. Now, nobody's asking me how the land bank's funded.
Do government grants?
No. The land bank's base foundation, first of all, the land bank doesn't pay us because we're paid through by the county. The county subsidizes our income to run the land bank. But the land bank's funded through the lien of tax. So, if somebody pays a late tax bill, not until it's late, there's a penalty for that. And out of that penalty, the land bank's giving 2.5%. We're not getting 2.5%. So, the bill's paid. Once it's done, then we receive that twice a year, just like y'all, for our taxes twice a year. After the assessments are all done, and you turn out enough claims collected, we get a check of 2.5% of the late fee. We take nothing away from the base foundation of funding, so it's the late fee, part of the late fee that we get. It's somewhere between $80,000 and $125,000 a year. So, right back in organ houses. Those four should pay.
Counsel, anything else? Mr. Hales, thank you so much for coming out.
You're welcome.
Great to meet you.
Not for counsel. So, thank you, Mr. Hales.
Sure.
Now, did you say you were gonna give us $125 for coming out here?
I thought it was $200.
I thought it was $200. No, I settled for $125, the office.
You want to tax your check?
Well, your check probably bounced.
Yeah, I have my check. I got that deal all day long.
I do thank you for coming out, sir.
You're welcome. It was a pleasure. And I'll let you know, Phil will know about CPG quickly. We work on it really hard. The gentleman he spoke to, Ethan, in our office says, he's all over it. He's all over the land bank stuff. He's all over CPG. He's working for you every day. And I'm really, really, he and I both had a good feeling, had a good application on three points, sir. So, we're really hopeful that, why have they did it for us, and they did it for us again, correct?
Yep.
So, that's what we're looking for. It all goes to you. Last year, you got 100% of money. So, that's a good thing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hales.
All right. Thank you for coming down.
Sure.
I appreciate you, and he is absolutely correct. He treats the city fantastic. You've helped me out a great deal since I was planning director, now I'm city manager. So, you are a wealth of knowledge, and again, we thank you for coming down.
That's what you pay for. I have to do this all. We'll be in touch soon. And I'll have you to get ahold of your office on it, or the, and list the houses that you get. It's kind of a peace, peace focus.
I'll give you a call tomorrow, wanna ask you a few questions about your present.
I will, tomorrow.
Oh, you're not? I'll call you Monday.
I'll call you Monday.
Okay, I'll call you Monday.
Just call myself.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thanks, Tom.
Thanks so much, Mr. Hales.
Shouldn't we take him out here to the restaurant? He likes it right out here to eat.
Oh, we could have had our best meal.
All right, city management report, there is none tonight. Comments from members of the public? Please leave any comments to five minutes or less. Mrs. McKenzie? Yeah. Maybe move up here, just so the mic can show up for the record.
Your sweet tears are starting. Yeah, so I noticed this special meeting, but I wanted to bring this up in applications type of thing. But I wanted to see if there was any reason why someone would be able to put in an application if it was passed for them.
Someone put an application passed for them?
I was just asking if there would be a reason why it would be.
You might get a curfew or want to reply after the vote?
Yeah.
I would think that, that would not be my, that would be my assumption.
Mine for what? Uh, the city council?
The vacant city.
Um, I was wondering, because I was looking through the application that we did with you, and Ms. Hopkins didn't fill out the required application, so I wasn't sure if she would then still be a valid candidate since she didn't fill out the required application.
That's right, she just submitted a resume.
Yeah, I would think that'd be okay, because we've done it for Mr. Mills, and he went through it.
Mr. Mills actually filed an application.
Interesting. That might be a question for our solicitor.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that, because I wanted to make sure it got taken care of before anyone came forward. We have a good contact about how to use your name, so just wanted to check.
That'd be a question for our solicitor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, I'll say that. We're hoping that the most on Facebook, I was wondering, I saw there were two applications of my resume that board up the notice, the state's applications must be filled out and turned into the city building.
Yeah, we actually.
There's an application on file for, for that, and they, you know, it would be, I think it just wasn't over right.
Does that, that says that you said, yeah, because.
Yeah, because everyone says that application wasn't turned into the city building, they have an application on their resume.
Well, that's a good question for our law director. So, I think she will review that. Thank you.
Who was that?
Mrs. Hopkins.
Resume only? Yeah, I think I know what one else is gonna say about that. Okay, I'll get it all, and I'll let you guys know as soon as you get back. Fantastic. Okay.
Any other comments from members of the public? Mrs. Mannman?
Hi. Um, I know you were talking about the noise ordinance, so I'd like to voice my support for that. I've given a lot of thoughts for the city leadership and any council to review, so I hope those were helpful. I don't know if we're gonna be allowed to have a specific conversation if we get to that point of the agenda, but can you consider additional comments from others when you get to that point? One question that I had about the settlement of land bank, that was just a thought. My question that I understand across us, is this all related to what we talked about before, for nuisance properties that are abandoned or not taken care of, and potential for the city to buy that property and tear the building down and then sell the land, and then the city doesn't have to care for that property anymore? Is that related to all of that?
What I, what he was here talking about was a land bank. If the land bank would acquire a property and tear it down, the city does not, it would not be getting it back to the city more likely.
Okay. So, if the land bank acquire a property that the city had been mowing for a long this time, the land bank tore the house down, the land bank owns the property, and then the land bank is responsible to sell it? And the land bank is responsible to maintain it until they sell?
They have complete responsibility, yes. But more than likely, what to do, like, if that house on Ralston is being torn down, they're gonna go to that neighbor and be like, do you want this land? They're gonna sell it to that neighbor. If that neighbor probably says no, I'm assuming they'll probably put a house on it for sale. That's just my assumption, because they're gonna wanna recoup what money they put into it.
And so, ultimately, the city's not gonna own the property and be responsible for maintaining it, even if there's a house on the lot on there forever and a day?
It won't be, it won't be. Now, they have the ability to donate and backups, and if they are non-profit, that could be an option. If that's the case, then yeah, you'll have to cut that grass.
So, if they donate it back to the city, we're gonna have to cut the property? Because, you know, you shall, what, have to keep people from dumping trash on it?
At that point in time, I think I would recommend the council to say, hey, you wanna sell this next door? I mean, you, we, there is no point for us to own a piece of parcel.
And that's where I'm.
No, no point.
You know, if you buy this fellow's property because he was communicating with Becky, and the city's taking care of it, it's an incentive for you to buy that property because you're taking care of it for me. I've got a nice little new property there, and they're asking to move it home back. I'm not gonna buy it. You're taking care of it.
Well, I think that.
Becky doesn't wanna buy it because she's only ever saw your thing here, but also.
I think that someone up in Northwoods, because I've been approached by many people in Northwoods, that, um, that are very big, you know, they have tiny yards.
And so, could that be part of the agreement, that before the city becomes the owner of?
Oh, you're fine.
Before the city becomes the owner of that property, you already have some type of agreement? That the representative or son, or me, or that you, or both of us, that we're at least interested in buying that property if the city becomes the owner of it? My concern is that there's gonna be his property, his marquee, and all his properties all over town that maybe the house has been torn down, but the city is still owning it and responsible to care for it, and nobody's interested in buying it because the city's taking care of it.
Well, that's, that's a good way to look at it. Another way to look at it is like this, the city was already taking care of it to begin with. You no longer have a nice, and at some, at some point in time, I'm assuming, someone would wanna buy that parcel of the house.
We don't have things at the back either.
At the same time, though, I mean, I see what you're saying, and it's very valid point. Why not, then you can control what goes in?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
In Northwood lots, I'm the first one to tell you, we cut properties, and we lose a lot of money on that, especially houses that are vacant that no one lives in. This house on Ralston, 315 Ralston, we've been cutting that grass since I've been the planning director. Like, there's probably $10,000 in past taxes.
Would there be restrictions, like, did any license of operating take that?
Yeah, something might be a workout.
Take hers or whatever?
Well, you, now, we're under the assumption that the city owns it. If the city owns it, it's back to us, and we can talk about that agreement. If the land bank owns it, that is between you and the land bank. The land bank's gonna try to recoup their money, so I would, I would assume.
He said they're denying the business of owning the property, and they take it at the first place they already pretty much know it's.
You gotta, we did ask them how much it costs to demo house. He said, what'd he say, $7,000 to $10,000? You know, so I don't know if they're gonna try to sell that parcel for $7,000 to $10,000. I don't know how, I don't know, I'm not, I can't speak on that behalf. Very valid point, and you're right. I mean, what's the point of buying it if the city's already taking care of it? You would not be able to use the property. You know, I mean, it would be fixed off. I mean, it would, we would have to take steps because now it's a liability. If we just say, go ahead and use it, money available to reserve to get it hurt, now it's liable, so we would have to restrict that access to it. You know, but I've talked a lot, like I said, I don't repeat myself, but a lot of people in Northwoods want they to cost. I mean, they truly, you know.
And then one thing final, is that the difference between putting girls like that on a utility bill or on an assessment or on the mechanics? I think with mechanics, we mentioned before at the council meeting, is that where we have the best likelihood of getting our money back if we go to grass and, you know, whatever, without a mechanic's lien or rather than on the assessment?
I haven't looked into it, so hopefully one of these councils can kind of look into that, on mechanics lien assessment. I agree. I like the route of putting it on the utility bill, and I'll tell you why. Because as soon as you go cut that grass, we put it on the utility bill, you don't get your utility bill, your water's gone off, you're gonna come here. Because what happens a lot of times is that it goes on these assessments, and it's not the houses that are owner occupied that have the issues, it's the vacant houses that the bank owns in their, in Northwood. You know, so I honestly have never seen a city put a mechanic's lien on, and I have never seen the city put it on utility bills, and that tells me it's probably, and the point of doing these assessments is probably outlined in the office code about the way that you have to do this. So, I think there's a lot of research that needs to be done, but I think if we come together as a group and think of how creatively we can take care of this, it's gonna help the city. I mean, it does a lot of man out to go out there and cut these vacant parcels on a rotation, and then we don't get any of the money back, you know? And I said this at the last work session, the city dating, they'll maybe cut the grass once or twice a year. Springfield apparently doesn't cut it at all. If it comes to that point, if we have a lot of vacant houses, I mean, is that something the city's gonna entertain and not cutting at all? I don't like that. I don't like that at all, I think it looks horrible. I think you get away with it in cities that are sized in Springfield and Dayton because there's other flat around. If we can pull that, wrap that stuff in a small city like us, it's gonna stick out by the sort of thought. So, I would recommend that we, we always need to take care of those parcels, whether it's an empty, whether someone's there. Now, me and Mr. Cook talked today, what I would like to do, and Mr. Cook would like to do, is really get the community involved in this. Because sometimes we do abatements on people who are elderly, who can't get out, who can't cut their grass. They don't have grandparents, they're family, who has to come cut that grass. So, it's really hard for them to get out and clean up their property. You know, I gave the example of where I grew up, you know, like, for example, fall, like, the football team will come out, the football team will come out, the soccer team will come out, they'll go around town and say, hey, we're gonna clean up your yard. You know, get the community involved in this. I mean, we are, it's to the point to where, you know, we're a very force staff in the city. We are, I mean, it is, that is the facts. They have a lot of other things they need to keep up on top of these abatements, which we take top. And there's money associated with it. We go do a nuisance abatement. A nuisance abatement is not the same as a grass abatement. Grass abatements are relatively easily equipped. We go cut the grass, we take the clippings, we leave. If it's a nuisance abatement, we did one two years ago in Chestnut, twice a year. We had to go out on a dumpster, we had to go, I mean, it took forever to get this house cleaned, and that bill, I think, was close to $4,000. Now, that house was resold, so I think we recoup that money, but sometimes we don't recoup it. But we have a responsibility as an administration, as a council, and as a citizen, to make this city nice. And we have to, we have to keep up, we have to keep up on these abatements, but they are costly.
I just wanna make sure that we weren't, that we were watching operating pitfalls at mine, and expecting that we were gonna, and in another situation that was better or worse than what we are now. The land bank doesn't want a property, the city belongs to a property. That's why we're getting out of this.
Mr. Cook?
In the meeting we had with Mr. Hales, Mr. Bridge, and Mr. Cook, myself, it's a gamble when we go out and mow the grass to be able to recuperate the money. All we're doing by mowing it is we're trying to keep the rats out, for one. Fleas, ticks, whatever.
Everything.
Pardon?
Skunks, raccoons.
Right, skunks, raccoons out of. But there's no guarantee that if we spend $10,000 mowing grass, that we're ever gonna get it back. And that's $10,000 in tax dollars. We can go and try to put a lien against it, but there again, you've gotta find out who owns it. You've gotta check to see if Medicaid hadn't took it over yet, or is it at a sheriff's office? So, there's, you're spending a lot of money to try to find out exactly who owns the property and how to recuperate. I mean, it's a gamble either way you go when you mow. I mean, I'd like to be able to go over here and mow somebody's yard and get paid for it. And I don't wanna see tall grass sit beside my property either. I mean, you can't put a drone in the air to check the backyard because then you're getting into privacy act on the neighbor. If she laying out there half dust, now you're in trouble, is according to Mr. Hall. Now, if a neighbor gives us permission to use his fence there and climb up on a ladder and snap a picture, we can do that on the back property, in the backyard. But there again, you don't know what's in there. If somebody put metal in there, there's lawn chairs, when you run that bush all back there, you end up tearing, you could tear it up. So, first you gotta send your crews in to walk it. They've gotta worry about getting bit, fleas, ticks, whatever in there. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but like I say, trying to recuperate what we spent is hard to do. The best way is to let them come in, take over the property. Then if they wanna, correct me if I'm wrong, he can't give it back to us from what he told us.
We don't have to accept it.
Pardon?
We don't have to take it?
Yeah, we don't have to take it, but we can take it back after they've leveled the house, if they give it back to us. We can sell the parcel, and that will recuperate some of our money back.
And we could also, I can't, I don't know if we can donate property as a municipality. We might have to bid, but we can put it up, is that making the parcel a bid? You know, because we've had some insurance, well, it was Habitat Community, they announced full or center housing at Springfield to take some of these parcels and build Habitat Houses, you know? So, you know, there's options, but we don't have to take it, you know? But we oughta start somewhere, you know?
But if we did maintain the property, they're gonna be calling in, why aren't you doing this?
And they do.
All right. So, we have no resolutions tonight. No committee reports, no ordinances, other business, Madison Street School discussion. If you have any comments on that, then you can cover that with Mr. Hales. So, nuisance properties. You want to have any comments on nuisance properties? No?
Do you mind if I just give an update? We, we only have so many workers that go out and do this. Next year for 2019 budget, I will be working with council and suggesting, or not suggesting, but requesting a line item in our planning and zoning department that would allow us to, for example... that would allow us to, for example, say someone has their whole entire house needs painting, it's chipping, it looks horrible. Well, neighbor A and neighbor B in the middle, but I don't like to see it, people don't like to see that. We could technically enforce, enforce them to paint their house and fix that chipping. Or someone has gutter stuff coming, hangers, gutters hanging down, any structural defect, we can, we can enforce them to fix it. The only problem with that is, is say, for example, we violate a house that needs painting, and they ignore our violation, and it comes to the point to where we have to abate it, do the work ourselves, so they don't have to pay all the taxes to their house. Right now, we don't, we don't have any line item budgets for that. So what I want to suggest to council in 2019 is to have a line item for these abatements, because the last thing we want to get into is issuing these violations, going to the abatement point, and then doing nothing. Because then people are not gonna take the violation seriously, because they know the city's not gonna do anything. You know, so the city has very honestly lapped on enforcing those specific kind of exterior property maintenance codes because we have not had the funds to do the work, and that needs to change. You know, and if we need to put 20, 30, 40,000 dollars on a line item to clean up the town, I will be suggesting that to council. You know, that can also be used to, if there's a taxably equipped property, we can approach that homeowner or whoever's the trust of that and be like, "Hey, do you want to donate that to us? We can accept it, all the bad taxes go away, we take 10,000 out of that pot, we demo the property ourselves, and then we either resell it to recoup our loot and get it for property owners." But we have alleviated the blighted structure, and there are some blighted structures in this town. And there's not a lot, because a lot of people are coming and buying these houses and fixing them up. As I discussed at one of our council meetings, we used to average around 75 vacant houses every month. We're down to 44. You know, so we are seeing this trend, but...
But it's become popular.
Huh?
The thing has become popular.
You're right, and that's exactly what's going on, but we still have those select, maybe five or six houses that are beyond. It's beyond, they're structurally, as Mr. Hale had said in the meeting, they are inhabitable, period. You know, whether it be holes in the roof, whether it be structural issues with joints somewhere in that thing, they just cannot be inhabited. No flipper's gonna take them if they're structurally inhabited. But we owe it, we owe it to the citizens to clean up that, which is a matter of coming together, having heart to heart. These things are not done for free, so we're gonna have to allocate some money to get that done.
Anything else on nuisance properties?
Thank you.
Nothing? Somebody's ordinance potential, Mr. Cook, this is the one that you wanted to discuss.
What, the noise ordinance?
Yep.
Well, primarily, I think Mrs. Manneman brought this to our attention some time back. I'll be honest with you, in talking with Mr. Bridge and a few other people in regard to this ordinance, I think we're gonna have to tread lightly on this, and the reason I'm saying that is due to the fact that this is a complicated ordinance. You know, if we set up a certain decimal level, that decimal level is not gonna be applicable for all sections of town, for all instances. So, I think we're gonna have to really sit down, and I think it's gonna take a lot of thought and a lot of work. I understand Mrs. Manneman's point. I don't know how we really address, she's got a church, she's got neighbors. This is gonna be at different times of the day. You've also got other people that have, for example, it was brought to my attention, there was a home workshop where a person has a home workshop, consequently with the garage open and the door open in the summer times, saw making a lot of noise for a certain point or period of time. This is kind of a touchy issue, and like I say, we're gonna have to think this thing out. This thing is not gonna be done in a very short period of time, I don't believe. And I think, again, when you buy this meter, we were having a discussion today, you're gonna have to have one for each cruiser. You're not gonna have one meter, because if First Shift Deputy leaves it in her cruiser, Second Shift and Third Shift doesn't have access. So now you've got to buy three, maybe even four meters. So we need, we need, I guess the word is kind of research this thing out and look at it. As far as I understand, the sheriff's department does not have one that we can borrow. Looking at the cellphone application, in talking with some people, there are different means of using a cellphone, for example, different applicators from different carriers. So consequently, your, I don't wanna say this, your means of getting that from point A to point B is going to vary. So consequently, if you go out here with one cellphone and you measure that, it may vary from another carrier. So consequently, a cellphone, I don't think is gonna be the answer. I think it's gonna end up being the meter. Basically, I'm a little bit of a quandary, what exactly to do on this thing.
Do you know how much he's, did you look and see Mr. Laurie, how much it was?
Yeah, they ran from 25 to a few hundred dollars.
25 dollars?
Close to a thousand, so.
I would take the 25 dollars, wouldn't you?
The one I was looking at was about $300 and probably rings.
Yeah, we don't wanna go too low, we don't wanna go too high.
Right. So, we'll look at if we can say a $300 meter, we'll look at 1,200 bucks for it.
I'd take ballpark.
But, uh, because various noise levels, the various noises within the city, like a woodworker, and I, I used to do woodworking, but I liked on my fingers, I stopped. It can get loud if you're running a planer or something, you know, but it's only for a short amount of time. You know, it could be a max, depending on how many boards you're doing, up to maybe an hour. If it's during the daytime, I think it will be hard for us to get lost. Uh, it will be hard for us, I think, to really regulate every aspect of every noise in the town. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be possible. I, I know in the email that you sent, and I don't have it with me, but I don't have it with me. So if I get it wrong, I apologize, I'm going from memory. The, at one point, there was something in there that, to regulate voices, and I don't know how you could do that. You know, I can't, I don't know how we could regulate children playing outside, yelling or hollering or screaming or whatever. In my mind, in my opinion, I would much rather hear kids laughing and playing in a happy voice than to hear somebody let out a blood curving strain, you know? It just is, is two different things. And, and another thing I think was in there was adult voices. Some adults talk a lot louder than other adults. So I don't know, as far as that, I don't know how we would ever regulate a voice or a child playing. So, I mean, but it's gonna take a lot more research, a lot more time than, than, you know, two or three meetings to, to, to come up with something.
Yeah, I think what we should do is honestly look, see what other cities have for daytime ordinance and noise ordinances.
There are some examples in there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Are there any here locally here in Ohio that you could, that you ran across? I couldn't find any, but...
I, I got a call, uh, day two today, about woodworking. She said she'd heard something about daytime noise ordinances, and she made, she made a very valid point. She's like, "You can't deny my right to use my property." And she said, as a hobby, she likes to make furniture in her garage, in her spare time. She has, she works, you know, it's not like she spends full time. She's like, "Sometimes I use, I don't know, saws, then joiners." She's like, she made a good point, and I understand that. And Mr. Lindsey really touched on it, Mr. Cook did. She's like, "There's a difference between," and she's an extremely intelligent person. She's like, "There's a key difference between continuous noise and intermittent noise." And she's like, "She, I get it, I understand that, I think every council member up here gets it, we're on your side. If someone's having a party and they have music blaring at an actual normal rate, that's one thing. If they have that microphone hooked up to a speaker, maybe even louder, that is a continuous loud annoying noise." In her case, and she was like, "I may be off for five minutes, we may be off for 20 minutes, but it's not a continuous noise." She said she just moved here, but, you know, we can't sit there and say that you can do this, you cannot do this because it's during certain hours. We, I mean, you six, soon to be seven, have a responsibility to ensure that everyone uses their property fairly, legally, and the way they choose to enjoy, as long as it doesn't put harm on someone else. I think the more that this noise ordinance is split and has stipulations on it, the muddier it's going to get, and it's gonna be extremely hard to enforce. There is no question I would recommend decimal readers for our cops, because at that point in time, it's gonna have to be something, because we don't ever want to give one of our contracted deputies the ability to be subjective in this matter. If he goes to House A, he's like, "Oh, it's okay." If he goes to House B, and he says it's too loud, House A can get really upset about that. You know, I think there's, right off the top of the bat, some things that need to be taken care of. Excessively loud noise from radios can be monitored. Excessively loud noise from speakers, amplifiers can be monitored. Excessively loud noise from instruments and stuff like that can be monitored. But you're gonna have to look at this council and the citizens, how do you make it fair for everyone? Because the moment that you take someone right the way to enjoy their property, that's when the city's gonna be held by them. I think there should be circumstances that says, "Yes, this is okay," and circumstances that says, "No, it's not." If you go and restrict how loud people talk, I'm sorry, I think that's a farfetched one. I think if you go and sit there and say, and even Mr. Green, who stated that he lived on downtown, that's downtown 235, we're gonna have a harder time restricting noises on that. You know, because by the time, it's gonna be a noise from a car, and by the time that is reported, that car's gonna be a long one. The last thing we want to do is put laws on our books that are not enforced, unethically enforced, or unequally enforced. And I say unethically, unethically, because I brought it up last time. This is not something that's going to target Hispanics, and I don't want it to go down that route.
Counselor, anything else on the topic? Does anyone have anything else on this? Do you mind if I pass this over to Mrs. Manneman?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Manneman.
Thank you. So I'm just extremely disappointed, extremely. Three quarters of the research is already being done. You're on the 20-yard line, the pinnacle line, ready to finish, and you're folding. This is not targeting Hispanics, this is not targeting young people, this is not targeting music, this is not targeting anybody. This is a universal ordinance that will be compromised and will help fabric. There was detailed research provided by our city manager, there was additional detail requested, which I spent a great deal of time putting some details together to offer all of you, as I promised. If those details are too much, let's try some of them out. A lot of the details are nothing more than elaboration on the one example that Randy gave you that you all break about the first time you looked at. So I don't understand where all this is coming from. I feel extremely let down, I'm extremely disappointed, and I have already suffered a loss of the use of my property. So where does somebody else's ability to make whatever noise they want, okay? And my ability to force me inside and not be able to use my property, how, how is that okay?
I don't think council's sitting there saying it's dead and water. I think they just basically said, "We need to take our time and really dial into this before we go ahead and shoot the gun." There's a reason why not many people in this country have daytime noise ordinances. You know, and I didn't search every city, the city, but when I was looking for this, not a lot of stuff popped up. I had a dig through the service also, you know, two, three pages in. You know, so I don't think they shot them down. I think council just wants to make sure this is done in a manner that's not gonna put the city at liability. You know, so I'm not speaking on their behalf, I'm just kind of summarizing this up, because I think your research has been fantastic. But when you do research, like when I was writing grad school pages, of course you do all kinds of research, and then you go back through and you get an ox and stuff out, and I think we're getting to that point. You know, and I did supply plenty of examples, thank you for acknowledging that, and I hope council kind of touched on part of that. Because I think we can come up with something, but I think it needs to be just taken time and made sure it's done in a nice and a very fair manner.
A lot of the information that I detailed in my email, that wasn't all me. That was things that I heard somebody say, some of them twice. That wasn't all me, that was more of the elaboration of everything that was being discussed. I just, I, I would like you all to consider, if you live next to one of those properties, what would you like to have them? What would you think was fair, so that person could stomach what they needed, that you can enjoy your property as well? Especially if you live in your property as long as some of the rest of us have. You're not new to the community, you're not new to the neighborhood, and there are certain standards that have been acceptable in a better community, and all that. We don't live over on 16th Drive, we live near the old, clothes and bars and all that kind of stuff going on. We don't live over on the line, we don't live on that way, we're a small, whether they're from the community. And there are expectations with people invest and buy property in the city.
Mrs. Manneman, that makes me rude when I say this, but that's your expectation. Someone else's expectation may not be the same at any point this year, and that's what, and that is a good point, because that's what they need to do, they need to find where those expectations harmonally exist. That, that, that's gonna be the hard thing for those people to do, is find out what is satisfying for both ends of the equation, and make that harmony exist. But we can't sit and see, because I lived in New Orleans for 20 years, and you live in two, my rights are more important than yours.
So we have to start somewhere.
Oh, it does.
So don't write a Lexus ordinance, go write a Cadillac ordinance, write a Chevy ordinance that kills the sheriff's speed, they told me, they would love to have something the Lord settled out that was enforceable. They don't like the lack of information, the lack of direction, the Vegas, the city that's running now. They would love to have something that is enforceable and takes them out of the middle. And then also, let everybody, all the citizens, know what the expectation is. You know, it's very easy to say, whatever zone that you're in, here's the numbers, it's gonna come out on the desk over there, or not. Daytime, not time, minimum, you know, if it goes for more than two hours. If you want to have something that's gonna go more than two hours, because you're gonna have a wedding in the backyard, then apply for a permit or a variance or something like that. We have people apply for building permits all the time and all of that, you know? Applying for a permit isn't really any real, we have things already processed for that, that we can, you know, copy all of that process. There's something that you can do, do something.
Do you know if the people that live there own it or rent it?
I don't know.
Do you know the address?
Yes.
What's the address, ma'am?
I have it right online.
Tell me after the meeting?
We, I will take care of it, you can wait, you can forecontact up there.
Oh, I wouldn't contact, I'm just gonna do some research on the property.
I think it's a rental property, I've already talked, I've received a phone call from someone in that area. I don't know if it was the same house or not. Is there more than one house in that area that you've called from?
No, there's just a one.
The sheriff has told me there's one house that they have received multiple calls on, from areas that...
If there's an ordinance in place, what I would recommend, and I don't know how this is gonna sound, so I'm just gonna say it, because I get the phone calls a lot of them. As I went language in that ordinance, it says, "We are allowed to get a monthly report of where these noise complaints are going to, and if it's heavily on Hispanic, that ordinance is no longer valid." Basically, it's a cop showing up to primarily Hispanic people's house, that that ordinance now is not. Because I can see this turning into a Hispanic...
Why, why does, why does any group of people, Hispanic, Italian, old, young, why does any group of people get a pass to do whatever they want?
I'm not saying it's a pass, what I'm saying is, is that I get a lot of phone calls that target Hispanic people in this community. And if you think that Hispanic people are the one who play their music, and I don't want to turn it into, again, House A is of American descent, they have loud music all the... to turn it into, again, House A is of American descent, they have loud music all the time, but never get caught on, but four doors down is a pin, pin person of Hispanic descent, because of their cultural, how they like to be and having, have parties a lot on Saturdays during the day, that they're not targeted, because that's what puts the city at liability. I receive phone calls a lot. And they all seem to go after targeting certain people. Mr. Cop, you had something?
But we sue you. But, but if there's a call and complaint, and it's verified by sheriff deputy going to that address and registering, then how is that targeting a certain group of people?
Because if there's more, if there's, it's a heaven, if that list comes back and say there's 20 addresses on it, 18 are Hispanic descent, two are not, I think that's targeting.
It's targeting the noise. Who happens to own the property doesn't matter. When I'm calling on the property, I don't know who owns it, I don't know who lives there. I'm calling on the noise at that property, I'm not calling on the owner. I think you're creating more problems for yourself if you start doing that.
No, I'm actually protecting the city from kind of, for some, for some pretty, pretty potential lawsuits.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm getting pretty desperate. And if you guys want to talk about lawsuits, we can do that. I told you all before, I am serious. I am determined. I am getting desperate. I didn't mention the word lawsuit tonight, somebody else brought it up first, not me. But if that's what it's going to take, fine.
So you're saying, Mrs. Ridge, on that, we're in ordinance. Mr. Dale, we have to wait one second, because we have Mr. Powell and Mr. Lowry. So we will take Mr. Cop.
Do we not have an ordinance for ATVs? Loud noises after, what, 10 o'clock at night? And I see Mrs. Mannheim's point.
That's the ordinance.
And, and I don't know how to answer you, I really don't. I mean...
10 o'clock at night, that's the pump you had started at 2:00 in the afternoon, and it's gone on for four and six and eight hours straight.
But I have yet to see anything from, anything that I've read were daylight hours of having a party anywhere on the books. I have not seen anything of such thing.
It's not daylight hours happening, it's the volume of the noise for hours and hours of noise.
There again, is trying to get a, I'm trying to think of the word I want to say.
Standard.
A standard, well, not a standard, but we, here again, we're coming down to a meter that somebody has to be able, we can't put a deputy there the whole time, trying to read a meter to see what the decimal is. Yeah, there again, you've got to get in to find out what the state law says as far as what the decimal noise is. Jail visits, the trucks come down Main Street all the time. With the new exhaust system on trucks, they're loud. Cars now, they put the big pipes on the exhaust. I don't know how many you've heard go by the house. I hear them all the time, and I live over a building. You know? There again, now we've got to look at some way of getting on, you can't get on transportation or trucks coming through Main, to the state highway.
That's why one of the discussions was that, you know, Mr. Grin had a question as well, that we, that's too much to bite off the chew right now, because there's other restrictions about the state route, about the commonly traffic variation in town. I purposely don't live on Main Street for that reason.
You live on a state route.
No, I do not.
Yes, ma'am. All the Lake Street to Clay Street is a state route. If you look on the books, Clay Street is a state route, and from Main Street to Clay Street is a state route. So there again, you're getting into the transportation end of it.
Where do I, where do I find that?
You'd have to go to Department of Transportation.
Is it Lake Avenue from Main Street?
From Main Street to Clay Street.
Is it state route?
Is a state route.
Mr. Cop, are you done?
Yeah.
Mr. Lowry.
Ms. Mann, can I ask you a couple questions? You know, I'm going back to square one, just out of curiosity, sort of fresh on memory. Okay, so a big issue for you was, um, the red mayor?
No, the red mayor that is basically a block and half.
Block and, I said, down or by?
Um, to the side.
So a full block and half, if you, that, that out? My question was just that.
I'd be happy to call any of you next time it happens, whatever, whatever time is happening, and have you all come up and see what happened.
Okay, so I'm assuming, again, all of that, call please on this issue.
I've been talking to them twice, that didn't go good.
What was that?
Um, they were allowed to have a party, a birthday party in their backyard.
Have you ever heard of that, just a thought I talked to about?
Yes. And deputies have always said, it was excessive. It met their understanding of what the charter says, there's a vague phrase in the charter that says loud and excessive or something like that. And it met their understanding of that. So they have asked them to turn the noise down. They did, and the deputy's willing, they turned it back. And then me or somebody else calls, and the deputy goes again. And sometimes the deputies have stopped, just because they heard the noise on patrol from several blocks away. Nobody had called yet, or someone had called, and the dispatcher just called them to the deputy.
That's, I mean, that's, yeah. I mean, I'll be honest with you, this is all, I mean, my first time was on the first review, that is, I mean, this is just such a complex issue. Like you said, wood planners, motorists, kids playing tag or whatever it may be, I mean, this is real touching.
We talked about, the ordinance would say that there's an automatic exception for normal routine property, if you're on the grass, putting a new roof on your house, if you're installing a tent, if you're cleaning a swimming pool, and, you know, things like that that are, you know, it's going to go on for a day, a two, or a week, or whatever, that's accepted.
Does this consistent a couple times, or a few couple times in one of them?
Um, exactly the last month.
Yeah, well, well, what happened?
Yeah, for several weeks there, it was every Saturday, or every other Saturday, that's for Dallas, this week, period, this year. And I haven't watched it in years.
We said it happened a month and a half, not a month and a half.
Uh, about a month and a half.
That's probably the same lady I talked to. And when I talked to her, it was a lady who owned the house, and she, her young boys were living there. And I told her about the situation, told her about the ongoing problem, and she said she would look into it. I just didn't know if it was the same house or not, in that area.
It's, it's, um, pardon, the house has been, and it wasn't just somebody took the radio on in the backyard, they had speakers that were just calling, they were hooked up to, they had speakers, amplifier, they had microphones on.
Yes, sir. Counselor, anything else on this topic?
I'm trying to think how to phrase this to...
That's under a felony.
This is the property that's right behind you across the alley. Right behind you and across the alley.
Portion right. Portion right by.
If you're going west on Lake.
I have not to identify.
No, that's all right, just give me...
Something that's going to be public on social media or whatever.
It's 10:00 PM to 7:00, she wants daytime, she wants this restricted.
Well, I've got an idea how to cure this, if that's the problem.
Daytime before the...
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's why it's complex, you know, because of the daytime. Yeah, the daytime, like, they show at 10:01, they can't, they can enforce that. When they show at 9:30, you don't have to.
I don't know how to get around that.
Cross Lake.
You know, or if you have a desk over here, have a...
I'll get with you after the meeting. Because I think I, I think I can cure this.
Counselor, any other discussion on this topic? Mr. Graham.
I just wonder why Mr. Grin would give a pass to people breaking the law, if this is because of their anxiety or...
I'm not saying I give him a passive over at the law. I would say this, I receive a lot of phone calls on complaints in the city, and a lot of it is centered towards people of Hispanic descent. And what I'm saying, what I meant to say is that you can't sit there and just have all these calls against somebody because they're having a, a birthday party in their backyard, and it's loud music. And I think, we have to be careful with how this is applied. I never once said you give someone a pass because they're...
You said, you said it would be, it turned out to be...
Yes, because at that point...
It would be non-legal.
Exactly, because if we have a history in a history state that is consistently targeting his, people of Hispanic descent, that would put the city at liability.
How would we have been targeting people that's Hispanic descent?
Okay, because if, say, in the course of six months, Mr. Graham, the cops were called out 30 different times, and 28 of those 30 times directed to people of Hispanic descent, and only two times first to a non-Hispanic center, or whatever the case may be, that stat should tell you who is being, going after the most.
No, that's...
Well, the other component of this is... Mrs. Mannheim, Mrs. Mannheim. Because the other component of this is, what you could argue in a court of law, is that no one is calling on the other house that's making all the noise. That's simply what I was trying to say. You, I have a choice to, to call whoever we want to call. Okay, if I live here, and my neighbors behind me have loud noises all the time, but I fail to call on them, but my neighbors on this side have a, a cultural gathering every Saturday, and I consistently call on them, that's the issue. And I see your point, you're seeing after the fact, it says, who's calling the problems?
At one party, maybe, or seven.
Well, if you don't, if I, it's, it's being flipped. You're not understanding what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying we're going to give anyone a free pass by any means.
I understand, it's not a great study. I don't believe it is...
Well, that's a different opinion. I think it's logical, because I get, I receive complaints on properties all the time in the city, and a lot of times it's ended with a bill in line with Mexico. So I see a lot of it, I hear a lot of it, you know? I have a different viewpoint on it than you do, because you don't receive complaints about the city, the way that I do. It was never meant to be misprue. I'm just simply saying, we need to be very careful that we're not end up like, looks like we are targeting one group of people. And that can be very easily derived, again, if we have a history of certain houses being targeted. Now, the other component of that is, like I said, we don't know who's going to call on who. But at the end of the day, facts are facts and stats are stats.
Well, then, we also say that these are maybe Hispanic people, because this is one of the statements.
That's, that's kind of an apples to the ordinance.
Exactly the same.
No, it's not.
The smell.
I have repeatedly said, I don't care who lives there.
I'm not saying...
I have never said anything like that to anybody.
Never said a word.
I don't, I don't care who they are. I, you're, this is coming out that I'm targeting a particular group of people.
I never once said that.
And that's not, I, I just want to enjoy my property in peace. That's all I want. And if we have an ordinance that gives direction to the deputies that say, here's the decimal during the day, here's the decimal during the night, and deputy, we want you to enforce that, where you get a call on, as I said, the deputies have stopped at this one house because they heard, not even knowing whether there was a social complaint or not. So if we have an ordinance that gives direction to the deputies, that's part of their charge, that if they're on team call, and they're not muted at the party somewhere, and they come across it, who is ordering that noise ordinance, it's upon the deputy to stop and give a warning the first time, or is that the time issue refined, or whatever the ordinance has it.
Yeah.
That everybody can be treated fairly. The deputies will have measurements on what the decimal levels were that they reported when they stopped, whether or not they was talking of their noise, or because there had been a complaint issue. There's easy ways to make this manageable and enforceable, and have something to start with, so that the deputies can, can do something when they get these calls.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cook here pointed out in the ordinance that we currently have, I think we need to look at this ordinance and put some teeth to it. One section of it says here, radios, phonographs, and the light. And I'm going to skip down here, audible distance of 25 foot from the building, structure of the vehicle on which it is located shall be paraphrased, a evidence of violation of the section. I think we need to look at our current ordinance, and maybe, if it's legal and all this, put some teeth to this, where the deputies can shut the noise down, especially if it's on the microphone. I mean, because it, it kind of mentions that in here. Does that make, I'm asking you, does that make sense to you, and does that make sense to you, ma'am?
I, I...
Instead, instead of reinventing the wheel, let's see if we can do something...
You have a basis to start from, absolutely.
Let's see if we can do something with what we have, and put some teeth into it, so the deputies can act. Because I don't see any things where the deputies can basically shut anything down. If it's 25 foot from the, from the building, or the backyard, or whatever, that would, if it goes, I don't know, I don't know the lock sizes, but 25 foot isn't that far. You know, it's like from here to that wall, and it may be count that far. So I think we, I think we need to look at the ordinance, I think council needs to look at this ordinance, and see if we can put something in this ordinance to assist the deputies, which in return would assist you and the rest of, the rest of the community.
We have our power in this issue, and we'll work at length.
But one of my main concerns is again, that I've been told that what we have on the term now, basically only have violation 10 o'clock, 9:00 to 7:00 in the morning, and it's not sufficient.
And again, 7:00 PM, sorry, is that 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Yes, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
We have another work session scheduled, and we have two weeks to discuss the topics this year, each of us individually, and figure out what we want to do, and what it's going to take, I don't think that's a good one, aside from I, at this point, I mean. And I don't think it's awesome aside from I, I'm going to do a little bit of research.
Yeah, it's a tall...
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mann, you... Go ahead, yeah. Okay, so the time the deputy come out, said that it was a necessity, and asked them to turn it down, and they turned it up as soon as they left. So why don't they, why don't they come back and say, you know, another time, assuming some of the deputies have seen this being continued from that ticket?
Including, it was recently deputy down...
If they're agreeing that it's above the limit of what our rules say.
Because it's, it's subjective, and there's nothing that they can do, just because they have to go back twice in one night, or three times in one night, or there's apparently nothing that says, okay, this is enough?
We don't have fine structure.
There's, there's nothing, excuse me, there's nothing in this ordinance, in this section I'm reading, that gives the deputies the authority to do that. So that's why I say, if we go back to council...
All we have to do is have a fine structure.
Yeah, you know, if the deputies give you a warning, regardless of what time...
Well, you got to classify as a misdemeanor, and that's going to have, the fine structure's going to cover this statewide.
Right, right.
You know, so, yeah.
But then, it's a law.
Let me ask you this, how many, how many, how many calls do you guys get about alarm alarms?
Lot weird.
Alarm alarms?
I haven't had one.
A lot, like, I get one, one or two a year.
Yeah, I don't, I've never gotten one.
I think that never happened.
I was wanting to make a call myself, but I just didn't deal with it.
So is it, I was in my living room, did they prevent, is it really a citywide crisis?
I'm not sure.
I guess on that, we have two weeks to look over it and see what we want to do.
That's on that, we have two weeks to look over it and see what we want to do. How do you feel about that? Because I mean, there's no way you can decide tonight at this point, I think it's...
Oh, it's super complex.
Yeah, it's something we ought to look at individually over the next two weeks and figure out exactly what step we're going to have to do, and be communication with one another, and with Randy about this, to figure out what is the appropriate role to do. And then, remember, after that, we have to make the motion to even have the legislation drafted, and then what, and say, hey, all this can't be added to, she's telling you, she can come back and say, we need to get the whole thing denied.
I know, I know, I had a feeling our attorney would look at this, and if it's, she would have to cover a lot of bases.
Yeah.
But she's going to hurt her little Michael, we don't want any liability added, and that's, that's the best to do.
So I thought the plan was tonight we would have some input from legal and the sheriff, and I don't think we have that, so is that something that we can get, is it going to be used up again in a change of culture, or what are we talking about?
We'll have to figure it out from the point of view. But if it's already motioned that we have a meeting set anyways, and it's for, and we got to, all we have to do is begin with the next council, we need to establish what we're meeting for, and if we add that to the list, then yeah, that's up to, but that's up to council. We can't make the motion here, because we can't go here. So we have the, no business to be discussed.
Are you still using a 7 o'clock meeting time for the next work session?
Yes, most definitely.
I thought you were going to have the...
6:30.
6:30, all right. But are you not going to have to change that notification?
We haven't sent out the notification yet.
For the council interviews?
No, 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 we have, we haven't sent it out for, we already sent that one out for the appointment meeting.
No, I think when Emily put the work sessions out, she did it 21:00 and 23:00.
Yeah, at 7:00 p.m.
Yes.
Which said our meeting is at, the appointment meeting wanted to be at 7:00 p.m. So that no...
Okay, so you're saying that we're going to have a meeting at 6:30?
Yes.
For the appointment?
Yes.
Do we not have to make a legal notice?
We are on that. Emily's on that. That would be a meeting, yes, Emily's on you.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a structured meeting, like Minister America, yeah.
Yeah, we are, we're way ahead of you on that. There would be a legal notice to be sent, Emily hasn't got back to me, but when...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still in the closet, but that's all right.
For the new member, yeah, so once Emily gets back to me about the time and date, if that would be appropriate.
Do you want to go ahead and disclose when that's going to be, to the council members on the table?
Yeah, I was going to wait till Emily got back to me, but yeah, because I will make sure that was correct. The plan would be is the, move the meeting, like, oh, my phone just had the right, correct dates here. The meeting would be the 20th.
For?
For our regular council meeting. And the 21st would be interviews, because we can't do it next week, because Mr. Cop is out of town next week.
21st of our interviews?
Yep, and then the 23rd at 6:30 would be the appointment itself.
First, it's two days later.
Yep, so it's underneath the 30-day timeline.
We're not discussing anything else, I'm just talking.
No, I have to do this point, I'm pressing on. Still operating.